Good evening, everyone. Welcome. Please stand for the pledge and remain standing for the moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll just take a moment, please. Thank you. A roll call, please. Sorry. Mayor Dickey?
Here.
Vice Mayor LaCron.
Present.
Councilmember Sharno?
Here.
Councilmember Tolles?
Here.
Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Councilmember Magazine? Councilmember Spelitch?
Present.
Thank you. Reports by Mayor, councilmembers, and town manager, Grady?
No reports tonight here.
Nothing? Mike? Anything? No?
Great Thanksgiving Day Parade. Fantastic turnout.
Yes.
Good showing, good spirit in town.
It was great. We're really, really happy to have that event here, the parade. I think the only thing we kind of all did was we had a general plan 2020 update stakeholders meeting on the 20th, and then there was a public meeting after that. That's it? Thank you. Our next item is a proclamation declaring December 5th, 2019 through December 15th, 2020, as Fountain Hills celebrates. We have our chairs. Brent Crookshank is here. Rachel Goodwin is here as a co-chair. Sandy Ursini is our program manager. I'm going to come down and read it, and anybody that's here with that group, please come up. I'll read it, and then we'll take a picture. Thank you. Come on, Chair. Okay. I'm going to read it, and then we'll...I'll present it. How about to Sandy? There you go. I'll read it, then we'll do that, and then Bob will take a picture. Thank you. This is a good thing. Whereas the town of Fountain Hills will celebrate its 30th anniversary of incorporation on December 5th, 2019... Oh, thanks. And whereas the world-famous iconic fountain, the centerpiece of the community, will celebrate its 50th anniversary on December 15th, 2020. And whereas the town is known for its beautiful views and vistas, including the raising of the fountain at the top of the hour. And whereas the town wishes to recognize those who had the vision 50 years ago to create this oasis in the desert. And whereas the town is recognized for its many regional activities, including St. Patrick's Day, Independence Day, Oktoberfest, Halloween in the Hills, Thanksgiving Day Parade, and Stroll in the Glow. And whereas the town fountain is a regional attraction for visitors from everywhere. And whereas town volunteers play an important role in developing a cohesive and caring community, and town volunteers are committed to creating a year of celebration to recognize these two milestones in the history of Fountain Hills. Now, therefore, I, Jenny Dickey, Mayor of the Town of Fountain Hills, do hereby proclaim December 5th, 2019 through December 15th, 2020, as the year Fountain Hills celebrates, and urge the residents of our community and communities across our state to join in the many celebrations and special events throughout the year to commemorate our great community's history and centerpiece fountain. Thank you so much, all of you. You've been doing so much work, and we'll do the picture, and then Sandy's going to say a few things, aren't you? Thank you. So you guys hold it, and let's do this, and then we'll have the presentation. Well, thank you very much for that. I'm honored to be here tonight, representing the Fountain at 50 Celebration Committee. Our committee of volunteers has been busy since July, working to involve the entire community in recognizing and celebrating this milestone anniversary. I'm Sandy Ursini, and as we mentioned, Alan and Brent Crookshanks are our community chairs, along with Rachel Goodwin. And our group has several different subcommittees, each working with a different segment of the community. And our subcommittees are all here. Chairs are all here. Sharon Grisbowski is working with service clubs and organizations. Sherri Koss, the director of the River of Time Museum, is our historian with the help of Amy Arnold. Jim Dickey is coordinating the efforts of our faith-based groups. Stan Zeford is our contact with the school district. Carol Carroll is our tribal partners' chair. Phyllis Kern works with our local realtors. And Jenny Willigott is our arts chair. The goal of the committee is to create a year of programs and festivities leading up to the December 2020 anniversary. And then we want to involve all of our residents, as well as appeal to the greater Phoenix area. We want the year of celebration to reflect the history of the town while looking to the future. We want it to be fun, as well as informative, for our residents and visitors, and we hope to bring new visitors to town, introducing them to our beautiful vistas, our wonderful restaurants, our unique shops, and our amazing cultural community. Toward that end, we are working with the community band, community chorus, and the Fountain Hills Theater to create programs unique to the 50th anniversary. Our local businesses, realtors, and service clubs have all been contacted and are looking at how they can be involved, recognizing both their milestones, as well as the fountains. The library is working with the River of Time Museum to present a history festival and a speakers program. The school district, as well as our other annual events, will take on the annual...or will take on the Fountain at 50 theme for the entire year. The Amazing Fountain of Life sculpture will be in place and time for the anniversary in December of 2020. The Fountain Hills Times will include a regular column devoted to anniversary events, as well as reflecting the activities of the past 50 years. A webpage has been established on the town's website, which includes our event calendar. Facebook and Instagram accounts have been set up for ease of access to celebration information, and we're hoping our businesses, clubs, and everyone in town will add links to the celebration to their own social media accounts. A giant golden 50 is being erected in Fountain Park, maybe tomorrow. And this is a selfie opportunity, for those of us who selfie, and another way for our residents and visitors to spread the word. The year will kick off this Saturday, December the 7th, with the party to commemorate the 30th anniversary of incorporation as part of the Stroll in the Glow, and I hope to see all of you there. The year will end with a party to end all parties in December of 2020 in the fountain, and I hope to see you all there as well. Thank you again for this opportunity to tell you about the Fountain at 50 Celebration, and I hope you are as excited as we are as we prepare to celebrate our famous and wonderful landmark. Thank you. Are we allowed to say anything? Let's start first, yeah. Anybody have anything they'd like to say? Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. As a longtime member of the Noon Kiwanis Club, I'm proud to say that we're hosting the first official activity for this year-long celebration Saturday morning. We are having our Breakfast with Santa event at the community center, and the Town of Fountain Hills sponsors it with us, so we thank them for that, and I'm just happy to be part of the celebration.
Thank you. And then after that, the community center will be open, and of course, everything that we do, we really rely on our volunteers. It's just kind of been the name of the game for pretty much the whole 50 years. So speaking of that, I wanted to mention that not only did we have the parade, but we had the turkey trot, and I wanted to thank all the volunteers who were there. That was a very big job, and it was very successful, and I think it was the most participants we've ever had. So thank you so much, and the rain held off, and it was just a great day all around. Thank you very much. We're looking forward to this. Next, we have our scheduled public appearances. I think we have our captain, who's going to come up and talk to us about our public safety. Hi, Captain.
Hi. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Well, I got to experience my first turkey trot this year, being here in Fountain Hills, and it was a wonderful turnout. The weather cooperated, as you had mentioned, and I just wanted to commend how well put together and organized that was by Rachel and her staff, as well as the Chamber of Commerce...excuse me. For having that many runners out there and that many floats, it went off really well. Hardly any issues at all. I mean, none that I know of, other than a guy who was a roadside preacher. Other than that, it was a very good event and very well organized and structured. One of the things I wanted to take the opportunity to talk about with the holiday season upon us is our some holiday shopping tips, and I'm also going to work with Grace with the Fountain First Edition to put some information in there from MCSO. So we'll recap some of this in the Fountain First. But for the residents of Fountain Hills and just citizens in general, if possible, do your shopping during the daylight hours, if you can. Avoid carrying large amounts of cash. Be aware of your surroundings. That's probably the biggest and most important thing, is just being aware of your surroundings, and park as close to your destination as possible, avoiding isolated parking spaces. Set your vehicle alarm. Avoid putting packages in on your seats or in areas that are visible to people that might look into your car. If you're able to, lock your packages or your belongings in the trunk. When walking out to your vehicle after shopping, make sure to have your keys ready before exiting the store, so you don't have to fumble with them at your car. Keep a secure hold on bags, purses, and any parcels that you have, and do not place them on top of your vehicle while trying to get into your car. If you notice any suspicious people or cars parked next to you, we would just recommend that you wait for them to leave, or if there's store security or mall security, ask for an escort to your vehicle, and let them know of the suspicious vehicle. When using ATMs, always be aware of your surroundings. People, during the holiday times, it's a high-frequency time for thefts and other type of crime. Keep in track of all of your credit cards before and after you shop, just to make sure they're accounted for. And some of the other things that we always recommend, even outside of the holiday season, is just using a credit monitoring service to make sure your personal information hasn't been compromised. With that, with the holiday shopping, MCSO participates annually. We've called it Shop with the Cop or Shop with the Sheriff, so MCSO is participating in that again this year. The nice thing about that is each patrol district has a certain amount of slots where we can identify children in the community who may be underprivileged or whose families may be going through a hard time, and we can select those children to...they're transported by law enforcement down to the shopping center, and they're escorted with the police officer around the store, and they're given a gift card with a certain amount of money on it to shop for themselves or family members. The great thing about that, I've done it for several years, is most of the children who are selected, they end up not spending any of the money on themselves. They spend it on their siblings or family members, and it's really neat to see, because you kind of see how selfless that is, and, you know, they don't take the money and spend it on themselves. They give to others. So that's something we always enjoy. So we encourage our school resource officer and deputies on patrol to try to identify children or families who are going through hard times, and try to identify those kids that we can let them have that experience this holiday season. And then finally, prescription drug drop-off. I just want to take the opportunity to remind folks that we have the prescription drug drop-off here, and that's a partnership with MCSO, the Drug Coalition, and Sanitary District. I know we've talked about it quite a bit, but we just want to remind folks, especially as the holiday and the New Year comes, if they're taking the time to clean out cabinets and shelves, get rid of those unwanted or unused prescription drugs. Excuse me. And what we do with that is we weigh it, we put it into our property evidence, and then it's properly destroyed, and so that helps keep those unused or unwanted prescription drugs, a lot of times narcotics, off the streets and out of the hands of children. So that's all I had for the presentation. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to address them.
Thank you. Questions? No? Thanks for all you're doing. Keep our holiday safe, and thanks for going down to the turkey trot, and it was a wonderful day, and also for being responsive and available for all of us. We really appreciate it. Oh, there you go.
You had record tickets last month. What's this month's record?
In all honesty, I haven't got through all the stats yet, so just with some of the activities we had, we usually get the stats from downtown by about the fourth or the fifth of the month, so...but I know our traffic stops were still up. I don't know if we beat last month, but I'll be happy to report on that.
I just think you're doing a great job, and I think that the areas that have been a concern, I've continuously seen officers there parked, and I think that's...you're doing a great job, so.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you.
I might deserve it, I guess.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have a call to the public. Do we have any speaker cards? Nope. Thank you. Consent agenda. Does anybody want to take anything off the consent agenda? If not, can I get a motion? I'll make a motion to approve. Thank you. All in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope. Thank you. On regular agenda, our first item is consideration of appointment to the Board of Adjustment. Could I please have a motion to appoint Jeremy Smith for a term to expire on October 31st, 2021?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I want to thank him for applying. I want to thank Daniel O'Halloran for serving and the committee for doing the interview and the selections. Thank you so much. Next, we have the public hearing, which I believe was already open for the talk about the sign ordinance. So the public hearing is open. We'll hear a presentation, right, and then we can discuss it, and we can take speaker cards. John?
Mayor, council, thank you for this opportunity to make this presentation this evening and discuss this ordinance change with you. A few years ago, the U.S. Supreme Court, in a ruling that dealt with our friends in the town of Gilbert, changed the rules with regard to sign regulations, and we can no longer have sign regulations that are based on content. Most cities have that. We have that in our current code, and so we are in the process of doing a comprehensive update to the sign code to address that particular issue, so we can be compliant with the Supreme Court ruling. As we looked at that, one of the most problematic areas in the code in general has to do with temporary signs, and more specifically, the examples that we deal with very regularly are the garage sale and open house signs. Those are two separate categories currently in our zoning code, and I know whether you're...and they're very similar in the rules, but they're different. And so to know which one you are dealing with, you have to look at and read the sign to know it's a garage sale sign or an open house sign, and that is not consistent with the Supreme Court ruling. It's based on content. And so what we're proposing right now is, while we're working on the total sign code update, to go ahead and address this particular issue, because this is one our code compliance officers deal with very regularly, on a weekly basis, as they're out, particularly on the weekends. There are a lot of these types of signs out, and they're having to enforce that code. And to avoid any problem that somebody might present to us about it being a content-based enforcement action, we're proposing to go ahead and deal with that specific issue upfront. And so I've drafted a revised code that takes the two regulations and combines them. As you look through what the current codes are and what we're proposing, they're very...it's very similar, because they weren't that different to begin with, but tried to combine the key components of each into one new code for what we're calling residential directional signs. And with that, once this gets approved, we won't worry about whether it's a garage sale or an estate sale or an open house sign. They will all be treated the same as directional signs, getting somebody typically from a major street into a residence where they're having whatever the event or activity is that prompted the signage. And so as we've done that, there were...one of the challenges we've had currently with the signs, and I probably won't get these exactly right, the...I think the garage sale sign says you can't have one of those signs within the Shea right-of-way, and the open house sign, you can't be within 150 feet of the Shea right-of-way. And so where is the Shea right-of-way? Nobody knows where that right-of-way is, and so we have just gone from the curb. We're saying 150 feet from the edge of pavement. Everybody can find the edge of pavement, so they can measure it. And so we'll try to clear up a few little things like that that were a challenge with the current code. As we finalized the code, working through the Planning and Zoning Commission, an item came up there in terms of placement of signs in medians. Currently, there's a prohibition that these temporary signs cannot go in a median. The question came up, well, could we allow these signs in a frontage road median? So along Saguaro, for example, there's the frontage road has a median. And the request was by the P&amp;Z board that we go ahead and allow them in those medians. Staff looked at that. We discussed it. We think it is probably okay, but as we continue to work on the total sign code update, and generally speaking, as I've looked at this in other communities, as I dealt with this topic in Mesa, when you get rid of the content requirement on temporary signs, we're very easily going to be allowing more temporary signs than we have in the past, and we don't know really what that impact is going to be right now. And so my recommendation to the P&amp;Z board was, let's wait and address that topic as a part of the total sign code update. I'd hate to grant that now, and we get into the total sign code update and say, oh, that's a bad idea. Now we see what all's happening, and have to take it away. And so my recommendation was that we don't include that at this time. P&amp;Z board went ahead, though, included that as part of their recommendation. They added that provision to the code. One other item that's come up since then is...has to do with palatial estates. As a specific example of a subdivision off of Shea that has one point of access, which is from Shea, and so it's a little bit different than every other subdivision or development along that stretch of roadway. The only place they could put an open house sign to direct somebody into that development is on Shea. And the right of the right-of-way there is about exactly 150 feet from the edge of pavement. And so by the code as currently drafted, the only place they could put an open house sign is really pretty far from the roadway. So they've asked that we amend the code to allow for that as an exception to the code, to allow some type of open house sign or these residential directory signs somehow closer to Shea right in that area. My response has been similar to that one. Maybe not a bad idea, but until we really know what all we do in totality with temporary signs, I'm not sure I want to put that in the code. We've been handling that situation as an exception. Currently, there is a provision in the current code that gives the Development Services Director the ability to allow for some deviations to specific temporary sign code provisions, and so we have been allowing him over the last few months, as he's had a house for sale there, to go ahead and put an open house sign up on the weekends in that location. We can continue to do so on that exception basis until we fully develop the code. So with that, that's my quick overview of the code and where we're at. Staff recommends approval of the ordinance as presented, which does not include the P&amp;Z's desire to have that median provision there. That language that they wanted is in the report, so if you want to include that, you can see what it is. It'd be very easy for us to add that, switch out that section of code. It's a provision. If the council prefers, go ahead and do that now.
Okay. Thank you. So we'll take questions, and we'll take speaker cards, and then we'll close the hearing. So any questions? Councilman? Oh, either one. Mike?
Well, thank you. John, another question came up that I didn't ask you today, but the Shea Boulevard restriction, is that something historically that's always been there, or is it because of speed, or what's the reason it's there in terms of...
Mayor, councilmember, I'll give my answer. Mr. Miller may have a more complete answer, because my history here's a little bit short, but it's my understanding, just Shea as that main thoroughfare, kind of scenic thoroughfare through town, it's been a desire of the town historically to keep a more pristine and uncluttered image along that roadway, and that's why the prohibition has been there.
So with that reasoning, I mean, then we could put that prohibition on other boulevards as well, if we wanted?
Yes, it would be possible.
And then, you know, I asked you earlier today about the five, maximum of five signs as far as from the...not including the one on site, and was that talked about at all by the commission, or they just felt since historically it's been there, that's a good number?
Mayor, councilmember, yes. There is a little bit of ambiguity the way I first wrote the language, and so it wasn't clear if it was one plus five or five total, so we clarified that, but no, they didn't question that total number at all. Roy, our code compliance officer, who's been doing this for a number of years, we talked about it quite a bit as we drafted it, and just historically, that's a number that has worked well in the town, so we kept it.
Are you envisioning what you kind of recommended or brought forth tonight to be kind of the package when it comes back in this summer in terms of...I mean, I know we can change anything we want, you know, in this, but I mean, is this kind of...would be your recommendation for this portion in summer as well, you think?
Yes, that's my anticipation at this point. Started to draft that section of the new code and work this exact language into that initial draft. But you're right. As we do the whole thing and look at it, we may desire to see a change, and certainly it's...would be open to any changes the council would want to make at that time.
Councilman?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, this issue with the signs on Shea, in working with the real estate community, is...has been ongoing for 20 years. As long as I've been around, this has been an issue. Back in 2004, I think, there was a revision of the sign ordinance, and this was something that was addressed back then. I would like to see some way, and I'm not sure exactly how you do this without really making it confusing in the codes, but you have Eagle Mountain that has, from what I believe, if this is still the case, they have their own design signs for open houses in Eagle Mountain that are all consistent, and they're supposed to be Eagle Mountain specific. Same with Fire Rock. So the entrance to Eagle Mountain, the entrance to Fire Rock, the entrance to Crestview, when you're coming up Shea or you're going into Scottsdale. Same thing with palatial estates. Palatial Estates does not have their own signage, but it's the same kind of...if you're not going to...if you don't have a purpose to drive up there, you're not driving up there. If you see an open house sign, maybe you'll attract someone to invest in Fountain Hills. So I think we have to do something about the entrance to Crestview to allow for a sign for that area, for Eagle Mountain, that...and maybe you have in the code that we can allow up to one custom sign per subdivision that has their signs professional, so it doesn't look like a mess, and you don't have 10 different real estate signs. At least if you have one, then the realtors that are coming from different brokerages, they're going to have their own signs, and they also work with the security, and the security guards will give people the maps of where the open houses are. But you have to allow that industry to thrive, and you have to...you can't put those people at a disadvantage that live in those areas, that they're not going to be able to market their properties effectively. So some way, we should work on something that's going to allow that. Scottsdale allows it. Shea Boulevard, when you're coming up, you see real estate signs on a regular basis. They seem to work down there, and so is there some way that we can potentially look at that again and find a way that that might work?
Sure. Mayor, councilmember, I'm glad to take a look at anything, or take any direction from the council. The one challenge we have to remember is that whatever we do, it is allowance for a sign. That sign can be an open house sign. It can be a garage sale sign. It can be an estate sign. It can be come-to-Joey's-party sign. We can't regulate the content. And so that's the trap, unfortunately, we get into because of the Supreme Court ruling. We can't just single out open house signs and make them possible and not allow the others also.
I guess something...if it's custom, though, like that, and then we're kind of saying it has to be an Eagle Mountain or whatever, then it wouldn't be a happy birthday or, you know...I don't know. I mean, that's the crux of the situation. Every single thing that we do now, we have to envision each and every, no matter how many signs or what they say, we have to technically allow, unless there's a way with design or size that makes it not, you know, something that somebody else would want to do.
Yes, Mayor, that's true, and that's the thing we have to look at. Time, place, manner, size, materials, those things we can look at, and so we can make it less likely that one of these others would do it, because of the cost of making the sign would make it, you know, probably prohibitive or sort of challenging. And we can try to look at that, but that's where the direction would have to go.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. I truly appreciate what Councilwoman Tolles has come up with. It has been a point of contention for 18 years that I know of, and it has always been a big question as to how to get people into these off-Shaay subdivisions. And I truly appreciate and think we should take a look at the... And I, I, I truly appreciate and think we should take a look at the recommendation of having a custom sign, as well as, I don't think, I don't think that we will be plagued with Joey's birthday party signs. You know, we never know, and I agree, we, we never know, but I don't see that really happening. But a very professional sign to get the people to turn in to an open house off Shea, I see as a, a value to the town.
Mayor, Councilmembers, again, right now in the code, we had the, the statement, no, none of these signs within 150 feet of Shea. We could change that to 50 feet, or 10 feet, or whatever the council might choose, if that's the direction you want to go to, better allow for them.
Yes, Councilman, I just wanted to check.
I would say behind the curb.
Which is what it is everyplace else.
So, so it will be visible.
Can I ask about that? If there's a sidewalk, not really about Shea, but if there's a sidewalk, so there's a curb that goes right into a sidewalk, then a sign can't be on the sidewalk, so then it would have to be on the other side, right? Yeah, okay. Yes, Vice Mayor.
So you, if I'm understanding you right, you explained to the Planning and Zoning Commission your hesitation going forward, and yet they voted to do so. Did they give a reason why?
They did not go into any real detail, Commissioner, about why, I just think they brought it up because they saw it as being valuable. There's so much distance, it's kind of like the Shea issue to some degree, you've got the regular right of way, again, for Suaro, you've got the frontage road, by the time you put a directional sign that far off the main road, they're afraid it, it wouldn't be seen. And so by me putting it in the median, it would do a better job of directing people to where the open house or the, the garage sale would be.
Thank you.
That's what I was going to ask about that, because the, you know, I know we have an aim of when to complete the ordinance, but in the meantime, maybe it would be more fair for those folks to, to be able to use that median, not the median median, but the, you know, surface, surface road median. I don't know how everybody feels about that, putting that language back in or not, or if anybody's ready to make a motion about anything, or?
Just clarifying, Mayor.
I'd comment on that.
Okay, yes, sir.
The service road median has also been a, a hot topic ever since we started, and because they, they feel like that, or in the past, they have felt like that if we're allowing them in the, in the service road median, then why can't we allow them in the Suaro median, or, and I don't know how to write it, but I totally agree, as far off of the, of the street that the properties are on the, on the medians, that I would, I would see no harm in doing it at all. And I, I, I have always felt that we should be able to allow in the Suaro medians, but not in the center medians.
So, again, Mayor and Councilmembers, in the staff report, under recommendations by boards and commissions, in that paragraph, there's some alternate language for number two in the ordinance, that includes the language that P and Z wanted, so if you want to include that in the ordinance, you can merely reference that language that we can put back into the ordinance.
Mayor, I just want to make sure we clarify, we're talking about the access road median, not the center median down Suaro.
Right, not the center, excuse me. So it says right here, provide, so, "Signs should not be placed on sidewalks or within center medians that divide portion of paved or unpaved roadways, provided, however, that a sign may be placed in a median between a frontage road and the primary parallel street where the primary street intersects with another roadway. Signs must be placed so as not to create a sight visibility problem at the intersection." So that, I believe, is what P and Z passed, and that would, I think, take care of what you're talking about. So I made a mistake asking for a motion, though, because we're still in the hearing part, so I understand we don't have any speaker cards. Councilman?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to piggyback on the discussion we've had, I, I just think we need to tread more lightly here, because I think that court ruling opened up the floodgates even more in terms of the type of signs that could be allowed under this, in terms of, I mean, I, I know we can say, well, we're not going to get a lot of birthday signs, but, you know, we could get a, potentially a lot of other temporary signs that go in and out every day of, of any nature, just about, and so, you know, to, to kind of carry over our existing ordinance with the five directional signs and, and this and that, and even loosening it up more to, to a side median and subdivisions along Shea, I'm not sure what a, you know, six square foot sign for a subdivision off Shea is going to help, I think you're talking to larger wooden ones that you can see. Anyway, I, I just, I just, you know, if you envision the, the service drive from, say, the theater building all the way up to, you know, Fountain Hills Motorsports, there's a lot of buildings there, there's a lot of businesses within those buildings, and each one puts out a, you know, a directional sign in that service drive median, I, I just see that as a lot of clutter, and I, I just think we have to think about aesthetics here as well, and, and how this town looks. And I know it's, oh, you're anti-business, no, I mean, I, you know, I operate a business here as well, and I think that real estate industry has changed a lot the last 20 or 30 years, and, you know, I, I don't know how many cars pull into an open house, they just see a sign. I mean, people look online for properties when they're interested in a home, and they know what subdivisions are being built, and there's, you know, the whole world of advertising and communication has changed, I think, so I, I, I just can't favor some of these suggestions being proffered tonight, because I just think it's going to open up just to a lot more clutter.
Mayor?
Councilman?
Is it possible that we can have a six-month moratorium on the sign regulations for Shea, and allow for, as we're indicating, one sign for each subdivision, custom sign? And you did it for Palatial Estates, it seems to be working. The, the home that's up there that was having the issues, you made a special exception. I haven't seen any emails of complaints, I haven't seen any traffic issues, I haven't seen any, any change in my life, and it doesn't look like it's cluttering anything down there. Maybe we try it for a temporary basis and see how it goes.
Councilman, I think a lot of this is seemingly going to be temporary until we actually do the, the whole ordinance, because I just, just even reading what you're, what we're talking about with Shea, if you look at what we're actually talking about tonight, residential directional signs, commercial zoning not applicable, right? It's only in residential and open space, or is it already self-limiting by what this, this chart is? And then you go back to what Mike is saying, I think there's going to have to definitely be some tweaking, for lack of a better word, about the whole ordinance, because again, we're still talking about content. I mean, we, these are called residential directional signs, but in essence, we're being told we can't even regulate anything depending on what's written on it. So what's a residential directional sign? They'll say, well, you're allowing that, well, you can allow, you know, you know, any sign, come down here, buy a car, or, you know, who is this Joe who's having the birthday anyway, but, you know, Joey's birthday. So I think, I, this is not the first or the last of this. It's up to you all, if you want to, you know, try to finesse it, I think we're trying to get a little bit of, of a handle on this aspect of it, the garage sales and the, and the open houses, in a way that might help with some of the things that we're trying to do while we work on the big one. And as far as I'm concerned, I'm kind of with you, Mike, some of this may change before we actually end up putting this as our sighting ordinance, because I have some worries about the five, and what's the limit, and, you know, sometimes you're on, you're on Fountain Hills Boulevard, and you can see, you know, open house, open house, open house, open house, the exact same sign, five in a row, is that allowed, or will this allow that? So I, I definitely have, still have some concerns about this, but I'm prepared to go ahead with this as written, adding the planning and zoning stuff. And if you guys want to talk about Shea, you would have to figure out how you want to say that, because I'm, I'm not so sure about that part. And we have no speaker cards, and if we have any more discussion on this item, I can close the hearing, and then we can talk about making a motion and amending it, however you guys want to do. Is that good? So I'll close the hearing, and then I'll ask for more discussion or a motion. If we do the motion as is, that should be right in your, in your packet, which would be a move to approve ordinance 19-16, that would not include the Shea stuff, and that would not include the median, the service road medians. So anybody want to do, make a motion? You don't want to make a motion to approve the thing at all?
I would make a motion, we, we table this, and allow for some additional thought and determine whether or not there's any way that you can write an ordinance that will allow for a professional sign for each H away, to allow for one sign within their jurisdiction, and write it in a way that it doesn't adversely affect the residents of those areas, that, you know, there's, there's a certain unfairness to them, that they're not able to market their properties from Shea. So if there's a way that you can do that, I would be open to that.
But basically, you're saying you don't want to have a, you don't want to do what we have in front of us at all?
I, I'm saying that...
I mean, not just you, just everybody, yeah.
I mean, the majority of it obviously is acceptable, but if we have to pass it as is, we may never see this come, come forth for another, quite some time, is that correct?
Oh, no, I mean, I'd be happy to put it on again if there's a, you know, it's up to you. I mean, the motivation for doing this now was what?
Mayor, the motivation for doing this now is our code compliance officers are very regularly dealing with the open house and the garage sale signs, and given the Supreme Court ruling, we just felt more concerned of the legal challenge with this particular provision, and so we wanted to go ahead and address it upfront while we, we're working on the rest of the code.
Yes, sir.
Thanks, Mayor. What's the timeframe for addressing it in the future? How far off are we?
So I've been working on the revised draft, I've had a meeting with staff and some citizens kind of involved in the area to help get that started. The goal is to have it to you by May, and I've got a draft pretty well through the process. By the first of the year, should be ready to start getting some actual review and discussion on a draft of the new code.
And how's code enforcement been handling it so far?
They've been enforcing the code as written so far.
And has that made anybody angry?
At this point, no. But again, the, the concern is that they could very easily be open to a challenge.
Well, I mean, I like listening to planning and zoning, so, so I take their consideration, but, I mean, we're only talking May. And if Councilman Tollis and some other council members want it tweaked so that it defines a little bit more, I mean, is it that pressing? That's the way I look at it.
Okay. So what would, what would that do to the hearing process and all that? We would just fold this into the whole thing, basically? Right? I mean, we're going to have to have a hearing for that, anyway.
Well, yeah, if, yes, Mayor, if there's going to be, if there's going to be subsequent changes to the...
The whole.
Sign code.
Kit and kaboodle, yeah.
Re-noticing, so we just postpone action.
Okay. Do we have to do a motion for that, or?
Motion to...
Motion to postpone?
Share a later date.
Okay. Want to do that?
A motion that we postpone this to a later date.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Thank you. That was weird. Thank you. All right, let me get myself together here. All right, next is the consideration of a cooperative purchasing agreement with Stabilizer Solutions. Grady?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, the item before you is for a approval of a cooperative purchasing agreement with Stabilizer Solutions. Stabilizer Solutions is a company that provides decomposed granite, which is the rock you see in the right of way, we use it in our landscaping materials, we also receive infield mix that you see at the ball fields. Whenever we've had storms, they've actually been on hand to actually help us with our cleanup efforts. The amount before you is for a five-year agreement, which is up to a maximum of 200,000. We anticipate spending approximately $40,000 a year with them. I'll turn it over to Ms. Goodwin, if you have any other further questions about this particular contract.
Thank you. Our town manager summed it up pretty nicely, Stabilizer Solutions has been one of our vendors that has worked with us through the renovations of Golden Eagle Park, they were the primary vendor that helped us remove tons, literally tons and tons of debris, they are the provider for our infield mix, our outfield mix, getting this fields back up, doing the laser leveling. They are also the vendor that helped us get Four Peaks Ballfields back up to usable condition, so they've been a, a very good partner with us, especially when we've had the damage, so we'd like to get under contract with them so that we're able to quickly address any future issues, but also manage our standard maintenance with them for our day-to-day usage on our fields, as well as the other amenities that they help us with, whether it's hauling or stabilized installation.
Thank you. Any questions? Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Rachel, does that include, I think, Grady, did you say that it includes the rock that goes on the islands in the center?
So they aren't the primary provider for that, but they can. They do all types of different types of stabilized, so whether it's ball field mixes, whether it's, they do a, we, we're looking at them for a product that they use in parking lots and things like that, that is more eco-friendly, that has better drainage and things like that, so we've been looking at a product with them for that. So this would be specific probably more towards the parks, if we did go to, if they were the provider of DG for everything, it would probably be significantly higher.
So, and just let me understand that, too, because in addition to community services utilizing this contract, Public Works would be able to tap on and use this as well, and one of the things that they do offer is the decomposed granite, so you see this, as you mentioned, in medians, you see it like in our parking lot here, you see it at parks, and so to Rachel's point, perhaps they may not be the best price that you can get on this particular use, but they are available and they are under contract, so if we have a situation where we have some area where it washes away, we can get them not only to clean it up, but also put it back or add additional to the area.
So this is separate from what you and I discussed, as far as, I said that, you know, the center medians, as you come into town, they're looking tired.
Yeah, in fact, Mr. Weldy, I know we're getting a little off-topic, but Mr. Weldy just received a quote back that was ridiculously high just for the design.
Oh, just forget it.
Yeah, no, 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 let me just say, we're just, we're going back to the drawing boards on that, but we're still working on that. As far as the corner we talked about, Shea and Palisades, we've got something in progress that will be done within the next, I believe, 30 days.
Do we have any speaker cards on this? No? Any other questions or a motion, please?
I'll move approval of cooperative purchase agreement 2020-045, not to exceed 200,000, over five-year contract.
I'll second it. Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Six, nothing. Thank you. Next is a kind of an internal thing, just consideration of approving the town council meeting dates and summer break for 2020. Grady?
Yes, Mayor and Council, before you is a suggested or recommended meeting schedule for next year. We do this about this time every year so that we can post what our schedule is to the public, so that they can anticipate when the council's meeting and when you may not be, particularly in the summertime when there is a little bit of a, a summer break between meetings. Of note, I want to just point out to you that we've also included the council retreat, you see that in blue, for February 25th, and this year, it was brought to our attention the last couple of years that we should have been doing this on the same day as the normal council meeting day, in terms of Tuesdays, so that you guys can just have Tuesdays out. We kind of messed up a little bit last year, and we ended up having our retreat on a Thursday, so now you know that we do the retreats on Tuesdays, you have Tuesdays for your council meetings and workshops, so. We also have on April 14th, a budget workshop that's scheduled, that we would like to have on that day, and then we also have a little bit of a strange thing going on with the, the elections are really, seem like they're early this year, the August primary, and then the LIG has chosen to have its annual conference in September, which I have never remembered that ever happening, and also part of that is because Labor Day actually falls very late this year, in fact, it's on September... it's on September seventh. Usually it's the first Monday of the, which that is the first Monday of September. So with that, we entertain any discussion on it. I think the mayor also had another point she wanted to also bring up as it related to work sessions.
Oh, thanks.
I do?
No, it's just, if, when we have the meeting on the sixteenth, on June sixteenth, if we feel like we want those minutes to be available before the meeting on the twenty, August twenty-fourth, that would be our first opportunity to vote on them. So if, for some reason at that point, we'll figure out a way to get us to approve those minutes. But we do have the video, so that's always good. But I just wanted to mention that, because that seems like a long time. And then just note that that twenty-fourth is a Monday, not a Tuesday, because of the timing to do canvassing the election. So that's kind of the quirky thing there. Any other questions? Do we do a motion for this, or do we just say okay, or? Okay, can I get a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the council meeting dates and the timeframe for the spring break for twenty twenty calendar year.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes. Thank you so much. Next is the hillside protection easement. Grady?
Yes, very quickly. You recall that our council retreat last February, this, this item came up, and there was quite a bit of discussion, and the council pretty much gave direction to staff to come back at a later time. We also agreed that the items at the time that were in the pipeline for us to go ahead and administratively address those so we didn't have to hold those residents up any further until there was action on this particular item. We were ready to come back, I believe, was it in August, but due to a variety of different reasons, this was just pushed out. And so want to let you know, I think we were prompt in dealing with this, but we ended up having to just postpone due to a variety of other reasons. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Wesley, who will give you a brief presentation on this.
Mayor, Council, thank you again for the opportunity to be here this evening. As Mr. Miller pointed out, back in February at council retreat, he gave staff some direction to work on a couple of items. Those were to see if it were valuable or possible to make some changes to the basic requirements for the hillside protection easements. The second was to look at the abandonments and that process, and if we should continue to process those and how. And then the application fee that was charged for that. Apparently there's some question at that town about, about how much we were charging, how much we should charge. So taking each one of those topics individually, as far as requiring new easements, as I have looked at the town, most of the town, as you well know, is zoned and platted and ready for development. There are a few pockets around that aren't, that can still happen, but through those previous zonings and plating processes, for most of the town, the requirements for the easements are already in place. And so making a change to the ordinance at this time, while we can certainly do that, it will actually affect very little property, again, because the requirements are already in place for most of the town. Those, and those again have been done through the zoning cases or through the plats, and setting up the requirements for each individual lot and how much easement is required on those. As I've looked at the ordinance and had some discussions with Council Member Brown, as development proceeds through the town, a lot of the lots that are left out there to develop are the more challenging lots. They got passed over initially because of the challenges. And so what may be more valuable than trying to do some kind of wholesale change to the hillside protection easement ordinance would be to have direct staff to look at ways we can grant exceptions on individual lots. So as we get that challenging lot, they have to have a longer driveway than normal, and has to switch back several times to, to cover the terrain, or, or it's just got some more unusual circumstance than normal, let's put some flexibility in the ordinance that gives staff the opportunity to work with the developer on that individual lot, to make adjustments and reduce the amount or, or allow it to be pushed around. And so with regard to the requirement for easements, that would be staff's recommendation on that particular item. I'd be glad to discuss these as we go, or I can go through each of them, and then we can discuss them.
You want to ask questions about that one, or just go on? Yes, sir.
Firstly, this is probably one of the best reports, and I said this about your last report, one of the best reports I've seen come out of the town. All of this was outstanding.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
I truly believe that. I, the only concern that I have about staff having the ability to make the adjustments, which I truly believe that the staff we have today has the ability to do so, but as, as we sit here five years from now, and you decide to retire, and Marissa decides to go somewhere else, and we, we have a full turnover in staff, how can we prevent this from all going back to the original? Can we, can we put something in the ordinance that gives staff the ability to open-mindedly change or work with the developer?
Mayor, Councilmember Brown, that's exactly what I have in mind. Haven't tried to write it yet, because haven't gotten the specific direction to do so, but have been thinking about it some. And I, my imagination of what we will come up with is some specific ordinance language, and then probably back it up with another policy statement that's adopted by council, that gives us a little bit more flexibility than ordinance does to, on ways to address specific situations. So we have that specific documentation, then that whoever the staff is, they've got the clear direction of what council's intention was and what the options are.
And I totally agree. If we can, if we can put it on paper to where it is simple, that we can pass, pass along, that will truly work. And of course, as you've heard me say before, on, on some of the lots that were sold in nineteen seventy-five, that had no restrictions, just building setbacks, to have the hillside protection easements applied to those lots, I, I, I will never agree with, but I think that if staff will work with the folks, I, I'm all over it. So that's, you know how I feel about that. And I, but I truly thought this was very well done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Grady?
Yes, thank you. And to Councilmember Brown's point, I think we can actually come back and have what I would call more or less procedural-type information that's codified, so that council will have some sense of procedure in place, I think, to the point that in the future, if we did have turnover, then we would have some sort of guidance that staff could follow. And, and it would give council peace of mind that we're following their intent. So I think that's really good. The other issue that we had, and I know Mr. Wesley mentioned this, but you recall the retreat, we found when we looked into this and dived into it deeper, that we had inconsistencies of, of charging the three fifty. And so part of this recommendation tonight is that we will continue to charge and be consistent with that. So that's the bottom line here, is people expect to be treated fairly and equitably, and, you know, they don't want to hear that some, some neighbor or some resident didn't get charged, but they're being charged. So we're gonna change that, and everyone's gonna be on the level playing field. And the fee that's in the fee schedule, whatever that is, and at this point, it's three fifty, that's what they'll be charged, and staff will be required to, to assess that fee at the time of the, is it at the approval, or is it at the time of the application?
Time of application.
At the time of the application. Okay.
The other item in the report that we discussed are the easement abandonments themselves. And certainly there have been some changes in the ordinance over time, from ten percent to fifteen to twenty percent slopes, not requiring them anymore for the smaller lots, anything under an R-110. And there are some challenges on individual lots and reasons why abandonment is appropriate. We look to see if there's any easy way to kind of wholesale, you know, do those abandonments for those lots. Unfortunately, we couldn't really find a good legal way to do that, because they're, they're dedicated in different ways, or they're individual documents and so forth. So unfortunately, they really do have to be handled on a case-by-case basis. I've talked with the town attorney a little bit, and if the council's interested, we can explore to see if there's something, again, we can write into the code, that gives staff the ability to approve the abandonment of a hillside protection easement, rather than making it come back to council, so we can make that easier for the applicants. But that is a little, that is a little bit odd. Certainly, abandonments and easements typically do come to council, and that's the standard way. We're not a hundred percent sure we can do that, but we, we could look at it if the council would like for us to. But again, we feel like that it's gonna have to stay a case-by-case basis because of the way that they are actually dedicated.
Thank you. Any further questions? Yes, sir. Go ahead, sorry.
Thank you. The three fifty, is that, that kind of just covers all the staff time devoted to reviewing this and preparing the report and all that kind of stuff?
Right. Mayor, Councilmember, that's certainly the case. As you know, we're currently undergoing a, a fee study. That's certainly one of the fees we'll look at. As part of that, we may come back and say what could be lowered a little bit or increased a little bit based on, on that study that we're doing, but that'll be part of that comprehensive update the council will see here in a few months.
If someone, you know, we get a lot of utility easement abandonment requests, and those aren't three fifty, are they? Are those a lesser scale? Do we know?
Randy, are those the same?
They're all the same.
They're all the same. That's what I thought they were, but, yeah.
All right.
Do we have any speaker cards? No speaker cards? Councilman?
For my two cents, I totally agree that staff should be handling these. The three fifty, the full three fifty, I think is fine because of the amount of time that staff has to put into it. And, and it'll be interesting to see what the fee rate, the new rate comes out at. But I have, I have also, for a long time, questioned why the council, why it has to be put on the consent agenda for the council to approve, because I've, in eighteen years, I've, nineteen years, I've never seen one denied. So I question why staff can't do this in-house. And unless there's something that is really unusual, a request that's unusual, that staff could, would want to bring to the council.
Yeah, Councilmember Brown's bringing up a really good point. I would say probably about ninety percent of these are very routine, and then sometimes we get into this situation where you have a neighbor dispute between neighbors, and that's, and I hate to get the council involved in that, you'd rather not be involved. But those are the only times I know that I've seen where they have a disagreement with the other neighbor on what, because they don't want them to put a pool there, because they feel like their privacy is gonna be, you know, or they don't want to have a patio that's gonna be close to their home. So that's, those are the occasions, and I know you'd rather not see those.
That's your job.
Any further questions? So there's four parts to this. Do we make, somebody has to make that motion with the four, read that out, or?
I think we could probably just say, move to direct staff to proceed as written in the staff report without having to read the entire...
Anybody want to do that?
Move to approve the staff as directed.
Second. You have a motion and a second, and it, I'm sorry, were you gonna say something else? I'm sorry. Okay.
You know what, maybe move to approve this, that's a good idea, move to approve the suggested motion.
Move to approve the suggested motion.
I'll second.
Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Six, nothing. Thank you, John. Next is our discussion and direction on calling a special election in May or in August for daybreak referenda. Grady?
Thank you, Mayor. As you're aware, the referenda came back for daybreak. The one was on the rezoning, which was the PAD, and the other one was the minor general plan amendment. Before you tonight is a request of staff to make a determination as to election dates, whether a May special election would be your desire, or whether to have it go in with the consolidated election in August, which is the primary election. There are advantages and disadvantages, as the staff report has, has indicated. Just quickly, one of the disadvantages to August is, as you know, we have a number of people now who are registered as independents, and it's really nonpartisan. So what the disadvantage is, is that they have to either declare what ballot, whether it's a Republican or a Democrat ballot, and then they have to absolutely ask for a local ballot. And if, if they don't ask for the local ballot, they're not gonna necessarily be given that, if I'm not mistaken. Correct, clerk?
That is...
They have to ask for the local ballot.
You don't have, no, you don't have to ask for the local ballot. You can if you don't want to request the two parties. The question for the town would be included on each of those, the Republican, Democrat ballot.
The disadvantage, too, is that this particular item would be like on the, after they go through all the different items relating to the superfluous things, like, you know, statewide offices, any propositions the state has, until they get to the very bottom, which is the local election here. That's one thing to take into consideration. The cost, as you could see in the report, the cost for the August would be less money. It would be approximately, let's see, it's about half the cost, when you take into consideration the, the May election would be about fifty-one thousand, and it would be about twenty-three thousand or so for the election in August, because it's already a consolidated election. The advantage with the mail ballot is that everyone in town in May would receive the ballot by mail, who is, who are registered voters. So there's usually a quicker turnaround time in the computation of that, because what's happening is they just don't get counted the day of, they're getting counted as they're received, and then they're not revealing the numbers until after the election. And then they're obviously counting the drop-off ballots and all that the day of. So with that, we'll open it up to any discussion the council may have, or any questions you may have regarding the pros and cons, and what you think would be to the advantage of the residents.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. If you know, I guess I'll direct this to you, Grady, or to you, Elizabeth. So I, I guess I want some more information on, I mean, first of all, I think the cost is a concern for me, but I'm also concerned with not making it difficult for some voters to participate in it. So for the fact that the independent voters would have to request a specific ballot, do you know any more details? Like, how do they get good notice about that? That, I mean, how does that play out for an independent voter? I'm not one, I haven't had to deal with it, so I'm just curious.
Yeah. I'm gonna refer to our town clerk to answer that question.
Yes. Actually, you'll usually get, all voters will receive a postcard in the mail so many days before any election. A lot of times, people will get early ballot, it's called pevel, or permanent early voting lists. Oftentimes, even if you're registered as, as a specific party, you can ask for that ballot as an early voter request, and then that's what would be sent to them. But if you're an independent and you have not talked with the county about which ballot you would like, you have to physically contact them and request that. Or if you prefer, you can just request just the town ballot. So it's confusing. That, we've run into this since we've had to consolidate with the statewide elections, because we are nonpartisan, and then it creates an issue, but...
I want to mention, too, Sherri, that the other part of it is if people are used to their mail, so even if they are partisan, and they know they're gonna get their ballot, if they're gone and they get their mail forwarded, a ballot cannot be forwarded. So even if they are on the automatic and on the, get a party, but they're gone for the summer, they'll be getting their mail, but they have to request a ballot, because they have to be, you know, they have to prove that they're who they are.
Yes, if I could have, they would have to notify the county. They will forward it, but it, it's not a forward, it would just be a temporary mailing to a different address. But you would have to contact the county directly to make that change.
Right. Any, any other discussion?
Well, I guess it's probably unorthodox, but I do have a question, and if I can call on someone in the crowd, in the audience, that was participant in putting together the referendum.
Why don't I see if we have any speaker cards?
Do we have any speaker cards?
Okay, why don't we, why don't we do that, maybe?
I'd like to hear what the people that organized the referendum, if they have an opinion on when they would like to see this on the ballot.
Okay. Let's do the speaker.
Pete Rock.
Hi, Mayor Dickey. Good evening, Mayor Dickey, and fellow council members. Yes, I have an opinion on what we should be doing here. My comments have to be sort of, I guess, couched in the fact that I've not seen the report. I just, no one, this just reflects my knowledge up to this point. But I'm urging the council to schedule the daybreak referendum vote for May of two thousand twenty, as a special election, where it will be the only item on the ballot. as a special election, where it will be the only item on the ballot. I realize that holding the vote in May will cost more than holding it in August, but I believe the indirect costs associated with placing this issue on the August primary election will largely cancel out any real differences in those costs. I also believe that moving the vote to August risks disenfranchising voters, in particular independent voters. Let me explain. First, according to Grady Miller, the town manager, there are significant indirect costs that the, that the town will incur if the daybreak referendum is added to an already full primary ballot in August. These costs include public record requests, meeting with residents to explain the process, answer their questions, and processing requests for ballots from independent voters. Second, there's the real risk of disenfranchising voters if the vote is conducted in August. Arizona has an open primary system, which allows independent voters to vote in either party elections. However, independent voters, at least as my understanding up to this point, must request a ballot, it will not be automatically provided. The town will have to process these requests. This risks, to me, this risks causing voter fatigue and losing the votes and the voices of independent voters. Finally, the August primary ballot is consolidated. It includes, as Grady had spoken earlier about, it includes statewide issues, as well as candidates running for a variety of seats, including the legislature. Daybreak will be the last ballot that the voters will see in an already congested ballot. And again, to me, this risks disenfranchi, disenfranchising voters by making it laborious and confusing. Now, on the other hand, an all-mail-in ballot held in May will reach every registered voter in Fountain Hills, and the results will be processed very quickly. I think you all understand the importance of this issue to the citizens of Fountain Hills, both pro and con. Let's make sure that every vote is counted, and that every vote counts. I urge you to schedule the daybreak referendum for May of 2020. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Nope, 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 no clapping. Another, any other cards? No? Thank you. That's one, so any other discussion?
We heard.
Councilman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Grady, what was the cost of having the election for the tax when that was a single issue?
I don't recall, but it would have to be very close to what this is here, because that was only a couple of years ago. So the only difference might have been is probably the publicity pamphlet might have been the difference in cost, because I think under our intergovernmental agreement, it's been about the same for the cost per ballot to be processed.
Because the turnout for that, I mean, the return on that was quite high, correct?
It was, yes, I would say it was probably 68, two-thirds to 75%.
I mean, I, I preach about not spending money and everything, and I don't like to spend money, but the cost difference, as the gentleman just articulated, it seems like the, the extra money that it'll cost to have the election in May without disenfranchising some voters who won't know the process of, that are, you know, independents, that won't know the process of requesting a ballot and everything. I mean, it pains me to spend the money, but it just seems like it might be the, the thing to do.
Thank you. Any other? Councilman?
Hi, thank you. Do you have numbers on the primary elections in the past compared to the single-issue special elections as to numbers of voters that participated?
I would have that, I don't have it in front of me. I do have that available.
Because that also would tell us a little bit about participation, right?
Yes.
Just in general, the, the turnout at the, the last one in 2018 was, was pretty good for partisan, but for independent, it was like 4%. The other thing I want to mention is though, even though it's consolidated, which has a lot of people wanting to vote for different, because there's going to be so many things on it, when you get, there may be like an overall turnout of, say, 45% or 50%, whatever, but when you get to those questions, because this is what happened when we had to change our, just our city elections, you know, for, for council and mayor, those, that turnout isn't as good as it was when we used to do March in May, because by, because of the fatigue and that kind of thing. So I'm, I, I really think I would like to do it in May. So it's up to all of you to make a motion or to continue discussing. Yes, sir?
Grady, so with the extra money, we're going to find it somewhere?
If we? Yes.
Okay.
And? Oh, payroll deduction.
Payroll, there you go.
I was just teasing. Yeah, on me.
Can we make less than we make now? Just wondering.
No, of course, you know, we, part of the council-approved budget, we always plan for unplanned contingencies, and so we would find the money.
And I wouldn't underestimate the, I mean, really, we've had so many public record requests, so many emails, so much, this has probably since last February been a pretty big topic, and taken a lot of staff and, and other resources. So I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't dismiss that, some of that will be offset by shortening the time.
Well, Mayor, and I, I think too, just to add, I, you know, I think it's in the best interest of, of everyone involved, pro and con, to, to settle this once and for all, and the sooner the better. And just want to note it for the record, I totally agree with Dr. Brock and his comments. So I too think the May election is best for everyone, and, you know, we have unplanned money that is in the budget, so I know it pains you, Councilman Spelidge, but I think it'll be worth it.
Vice Mayor?
Well, I agree, and I was going to make a motion, unless someone else had something to say.
I just have a question.
Oh, yes, sir.
You know, we're kind of on uncharted territory in regards to having, in my opinion, this is something new. And is it possible that the, the town could also put other initiatives on this same special election ballot?
Yes.
Okay, so, in, you know, this is thinking down the road, I don't know where this, the direction of this vote's going to go, but I for one feel that we've downzoned this property for this resort. If, if this is, excuse me, for these apartments, if, if this ultimately is voted down by the residents of Fountain Hills, I for one would never want anything developed on that land, and, or I don't believe we would be looking at having a developer develop that land. And if there was any way that the town could acquire that property in a, in a, in a way that we would look at some sort of municipal bond, and, and have that area open space in perpetuity, and allow for some paths, the Trail Blazers, and incorporate it into the McDowell Mountain Preserve, and tie it all in together, beautify that corner. I think those that would be against the development of that property may be in favor of the town investing and keeping that in perpetuity, open space. And if there's some way that that could be looked into, might be something that would be of value to the whole community.
Thank you. There's probably some timing issues with this, right? Like, if, if we were going to...
We wouldn't be able to do it in time for this special election. In fact, based on what I just heard, and it looks like the consensus is to do a May election, we'll have to bring back a resolution, I believe, for the 17th, and then we have to notify the county, I believe, by the 21st, that this is for sure happening, and then we have to provide them ballot language, I believe, in January. So it's, this is going to be very fast-moving, and I don't believe we would have enough information to know as to what the purchase price might be for that, to put that on this particular ballot.
And does it revert back?
Aaron?
Yes, Mayor, Council, it does. So if the ordinance, if either ordinance, the minor general plan or the PAD are rejected, then yes, the, well, the rezoning is rejected, then yes, it would revert back. Yes.
What if one goes and the other doesn't? I guess that's for another discussion.
It takes both of them to make it work.
Mayor, if I may bring up one other point to, to council, to Councilman Tullis's question, there is, there are certainly quite limited things that can be referred to voters. So my understanding, if it's something, if it's, it would have to be by a referendum that anyone takes, or by an initiative, rather, if the voters wanted to propose the purchase of property, or to, you know, try to pursue that approach, that would be the approach we'd have to follow. We couldn't just hand something to the voters, because there's no inherent statutory authority to do that, except in limited circumstances, that being by referendum power and for a handful of other minor things, so.
I get it. Councilman?
No, I, I just think in light of our topic that's coming up after this agenda item, and the, the money we're going to need to fix our streets, I, I, I just can't see any kind of question on the ballot for town purchasing that property. I just don't see that as a viable alternative.
You know, clarification, I, I'm, I'm looking for a litmus test of what the people in the community would want. It wouldn't be a ballot question to purchase it. It may be a ballot question that if, if you are against this development, are you in favor of a resort, or would you prefer this be open space in perpetuity? You know, something to essentially, take a litmus test. Why would be, why are people against this? Are they against it because they don't want this particular development and they want a resort? Or are they against it because they don't want anything there? And just to get a sense, while you have an opportunity to, to ask the question, that's what I was, that was what my question was, is whether we could put something else on the ballot as to a question of the voters.
So it's a good point, Councilmember, because I know, I've worked both in New England, you're from New England, and it's pretty common to put advisory ballot language like that on there. My understanding is, as the attorney said, we really wouldn't be able to do that. However, it's not to say that a survey could not be done, and that pretty much gets at what you're saying, so.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion? Vice Mayor? Want to make a?
I'll make a motion to direct staff to bring back a resolution for consideration at the December 17th Town Council meeting, calling for a special election in May of 2020 for the purpose of referring referendum addressing the proposed daybreak development.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye? Any opposed?
Aye.
Six nothing. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. So do we have anything that we want to ask the town manager before we adjourn and go into our, our work study? No? Do I have a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Thank you. Thanks so much for coming out. Do you want to take on five minutes, or do you want to, okay, let's do that. Five minutes. We are going to start with our work session. Calling this to order. We don't have to take anything. I don't have to do anything. So, let's just get started. Is that okay, Grady?
Yes, Mayor and Council. I'm going to turn this over to our Public Works Director, Justin Weldy, but you'll recall back in September, we last discussed our pavement management program. The idea is, is that we want to come up with a 10-year plan to address what the pavement management needs are for the community. And so, I'm going to turn it over to Justin, because I don't want to go and take some of his bullets out of his presentation. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Weldy.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor and Councilmembers, I've had the privilege over the last several years, serving under three different pay grades, to do an incredible amount of research on one of the towns, arguably one of the town's most valuable assets. There are things that I have found to be very consistent. The staff, the management, and the elected officials all have the same common goal, to determine the best way feasible with the funding allowed at that time and in this foreseeable future, to maintain and protect and make changes to this asset, which is our roadway network. So, having said that, and Mr. Miller alluded to this, we came back in September, we provided an incredible amount of information, a lot to digest. The consensus that night was, come back to us with some additional information in order to help us adopt a 10-year pavement management plan. We are here tonight to do that. I'm going to lead off with that, and then Zach with IMS is going to follow up with it. But what we intend to do tonight is provide enough information to the Mayor and Council to adopt a level of service, moving it from a PCI or Pavement Condition Index into a letter grade system for the individual classifications that we have, which are arterial, collector, and local. There is a lot of information here, and we certainly did our best to get all of the information that we could to all of you as soon as possible, but there was simply too much for us to get it into the packets, and I apologize for that. That was not our intent, but there was just too much. So there are some things that are going to be in this slideshow that are going to be a little bit different as they appear here, and we are going to do our best between the two of us, and three, if you have questions for Mr. Miller, to provide as much information as you can tonight, to give us some guidance, so we can come back in the very near future with a proposal, including possible funding scenarios to accomplish the goal of continuing and making changes to this valuable asset. With that, I'll introduce Zach.
All right. Thank you, Justin. And certainly want to thank, certainly want to thank the Mayor and Town Council for having me out again. It's always a pleasure to stay very close to home. We do this type of work nationwide, and I'm not too far down the B-line as it is. A few quick notes. You have a printout in front of you. It is a very extensive printout. It's rather healthy. There's a lot of pages to it. We are only going to be reviewing about half of it. There are a lot of slides in that packet that you have that have already been addressed via the September presentation that we did, so we're not going to address everything in the packet. It's going to be about the first half that we actually review tonight. The second note, when we presented the analysis results in September, September of this year, that was based on the 2018 inspection data that we collected right around January or February of 2018. We have further fine-tuned the analysis parameters, and I'll explain what that means here over the next couple of slides. We've further fine-tuned the analysis parameters to update the information within the analysis. So where there are some numbers that are going to change ever so slightly, nothing changes dramatically, but I'm going to do my best to point out where all of those changes are and discuss why those changes happened as a result of the analysis. Let's take a quick look at the scale of investment again. I know this is kind of a review of the investment. We're talking about 163 centerline miles of road that the town maintains on a daily basis. It's about 3.6 million square yards of pavement, and quite frankly, as Justin mentioned, it's the single largest visible asset that your constituents see and feel on a daily basis. And that asset is valued at $1.2 million per mile, or a total aggregate just shy of $200 million. So this is a large asset on the books that you folks are tasked with maintaining on a daily basis. If we take a look at the condition scores, so the network average PCI score here in the town of Fountain Hills is a 63. And again, the PCI score is simply a 0 to 100 score that ranks the health of a road. 100 is a perfectly brand-new road paved yesterday. Zero is an absolutely horrible road on its way back to gravel. Okay, so 63 is the network average. So if you dumped all of your roads in a blender and averaged it out, 63 is the average score across the network, and that falls in the good category. And we'll talk a little bit more about how that relates to others again here shortly. That number did not change. That number is the same from the presentation in September. Your backlog, backlog is all the costly reconstruction work. So it's all roads that fall below a PCI score of a 40. Your backlog stands at 6.8% of the network, and quite frankly, that's a phenomenal number. Anything less than 10% is considered financially ideal from a pavement management perspective. Less than 12% is considered manageable from a pavement management perspective. We'll talk more about that. In the September presentation, that number was 5.5%. So the reason it's increased by 1.3%, which, just to reiterate, that's not a big jump. You're still well below the very healthy mark, but the reason for the change in that is because we updated the pavement deterioration curves as a part of the town's pavement management program. And I'll talk more about the steps that we took to do that. So with PCI and backlog at face value, we're in pretty good shape. The biggest single challenge that the town is going to have over the next 10 years is the growth in backlog, and we'll talk more about that over the next few slides as well. To recap on the equipment, we did mobilize a laser road surface tester. That was a van outfitted with high-speed lasers, GPS technology, and HD cameras. Its job was simply to drive and assess each roadway, each block of road that the town maintains. So it was assessing a full suite of pavement distresses ranging from alligator cracking to bleeding potholes, you name it. It's collecting these distresses such that we can calculate a PCI score for each individual block that the town maintains. Now, if we take a look at the PCI results, this is a very similar graph that you saw in September as well. Tells a very similar story. What you have there is the PCI on the X-axis, and you have the percentage of the network by area on the Y-axis. So this is a PCI distribution graph that tells us where roads in Fountain Hills lie in terms of condition. The blue line is the typical distribution that we see. So just as a reminder, typically, we see a bell curve that's skewed to the right and centered between about a 60 and a 70, okay? What we find here in Fountain Hills is that we have far fewer roads between a 50 and a 90 than we typically see, and we have far more roads between a 40 and a 50 than we typically see. So when I talk about the single biggest challenge being controlling the growth in backlog, it's the result of all those roads there that fall between a 40 and a 50. It's that tidal wave of roads coming due for some sort of extensive rehab in the next 10 years. We look at it from a slightly different perspective. We've got a different scale there that now has descriptive terms, ranging from very poor all the way to excellent. And there's three basic metrics of health that we use to assess any given agency. The first is the network average PCI score. The average that we see nationally right now is between a 60 and a 65. Coincidentally, you folks fall smack in the middle of that at a 63. So you fall within average norms that we see in terms of PCI. Terms of backlog, again, your current backlog is at 6.8%. And I mentioned earlier, less than 10% is financially ideal from a pavement management perspective. Less than 12% is manageable. 15% becomes our maximum recommended mark to any given agency. And the reason for that is because as backlog approaches and exceeds 20%, it can effectively spiral out of control on you, meaning the big-ticket costly work can pile up faster than we can pump capital into the pavement management program, okay? So 6.8% is a good number to be at. The third metric of health is the percent of roads that fall in the excellent category. So those roads above a PCI score of an 85. Generally, we like to see a bare bones minimum of 15% of the network falling into this category, as it gives us a good indication if an agency has been reinvesting in the roadway network. You folks fell at about 20%. So it shows us that you have been doing good work even with limited funds. We have to give staff credit, and the town credit, as a matter of fact, for the work that has been done out there with limited funds. But again, single biggest challenge is going to be controlling those marginal roads, controlling the growth in the costly backlog work that has to be done in the program.
Mayor, can I interrupt you, Zach?
Yeah, yes, sir.
So the 20% that we are at excellent, do you think a lot of that is Suoro Boulevard? Or is it hard to say that?
Oh, that's a great question. I don't know what roads specifically fall in that excellent category, but that is certainly an easy list that we could populate and supply to you.
Maybe Justin can address it. I don't know.
Yep.
Councilmember, I will tell you that Che, Suoro, El Pueblo Grande, all of those roads have been paved within the last few years and fall in the highest PCI rating that we have. Those are long, wide expanses of road that we have, and that's what provides us with this number.
And then, maybe we'll get to this, because, you know, we haven't looked through this yet, but, so, the 63 average, is that a C or a B? Or can't we equate those yet?
We can. That's a B. We'll talk more about that as we reach each functional class.
Okay, good.
And I have a question, too. Maybe not so much of a question, but the average in this case isn't that great of a measure, because, a lot of it, because it's being skewed, but this is like a snapshot, and, you know, the one that was before this just shows how kind of out of whack it really is. So it's just almost by chance that the average is coming out good. At least, that's the way it seems to me.
Right, right. You can have an average that literally splits the network in half. You could push roads to the left of that distribution curve. You could push roads to the right and have this U-shape distribution, and everything could average out at a 63. So it's not just about paying attention to PCI. That's why we pay attention to backlog as well, because simply maintaining the network average PCI alone, in your case, does not control the growth in backlog. Those marginal roads deteriorate at a very rapid rate and fall into the backlog category. On this next graph, this is a very similar graph that you saw in September as well. This is the same PCI distribution graph, but now aggregated by functional classification, so arterial, collector, and local roads. And those are the very same minimum recommended targets that we presented in September. We'd certainly recommend arterials greater than or equal to a 70, collectors greater than or equal to a 65, locals greater than or equal to a 60. Those are not to be confused with the staff recommendations. We're going to get to those here in the next few slides. There are some small deviations in the backlog condition scores when you look at this graph. So for instance, you'll notice the arterial roads show a backlog of 0%. And that's a result of the trend analysis that we did as a part of this analysis that we've been working on over the last three months. So we literally looked at the available condition data that you folks had from the 2009 STAN-TAC study, compared the surface condition data from that to the condition data that was collected in 2018, so that we could analyze the rate, the actual rate of degradation here in Fountain Hills across these functional class. So the good news is, and I'm kind of sealing my thunder on the next couple of slides, the good news is, on your arterial and collector roads, what we noticed is, is that you had a shallower rate of deterioration. So the rate of deterioration on your arterials and collectors was slower than previously thought. So we were being a little too pessimistic on the pavement deterioration curves during their last analysis. So you get the benefit of that. That is the reason for the reduction in backlog at 0%. Now, to be clear, just because backlog shows 0% on arterials doesn't mean you don't have arterials that need extensive work, because remember, backlog is considered all roads that fall below a PCI of a 40. Any arterial road that falls between a 40 and a 50 still needs extensive and expensive work to be done on it as well. So let's talk about some of the parameter updates we did. I just mentioned this. We did a trend analysis using the available surface condition data from the 2009 report, compared it to the inspection data of 2018. Already told you, we've adjusted the arterial and collector curves to a more shallower rate, so we can be a bit more optimistic. Now, while the cause or the why behind these roadways are not deteriorating as rapidly, while the cause of that was not a part of the scope of the study, realistically, we can determine these roads are receiving less traffic than other arterial roads across the valley. So if you compared a high-volume arterial road in Glendale or Peoria or Scottsdale, or even Mesa, to a major thoroughfare in Fountain Hills, yours likely receives less traffic, less truck volume, and therefore has a longer lifespan as a result. So that benefited the analysis. On the Converse side, the local roadway deterioration curve steepened up a little bit. We noticed the rate of degradation increased a little bit when we started looking at the 2009 and the 2018 inspection. It didn't increase much. It wasn't much of a difference, but it did steepen up a little bit as a part of that analysis. The next big update that we did to the analysis is that we created a new pavement type in the system, and I'll explain this very simply. We included information on pre-incorporation roads that were of substandard design. Previously, in the pavement management system, all asphalt roads were kind of treated equal in terms of their pavement type and their cost. But here in the town, we know there's a big difference between pre-incorporation roads of substandard design compared to those that are built within design. There's a huge difference in cost, labor, and literally everything about that. So we identified those roads. That's what you see here on the map. We identified where those pre-incorporation roads of substandard design are, and created them as a new type in the system, meaning they have their own rehabs with their own unit rates applied to them within the analysis. And then lastly, the previous analysis was based on average rehab costs across the state and across the valley. So what we did is we took actual bid tabulations from here in Fountain Hills and used those to update the unit rates for each rehab behind the model. So this was really a process of fine-tuning the pavement management system to work for you folks, not against you folks, using the available information that we have. So again, I've kind of already gone through this, but some updates included updates of the performance curves, inclusion of pre-incorporation, roads of substandard design, and then updated unit rates using actual costs that have been seen here. As a part of the presentation in September, we did show different letter grades associated with roadways, and these are these letter grades here. So roads that fall between a 50 and a 60 were categorized as a C rating in terms of a letter grade. Roads between a 60 and a 70 were categorized as a B rating, and roads between a 70 and an 85 were categorized as an A rating. Now, as a part of that presentation, town staff, a level of service recommendations from the last meeting was that we attempt to achieve arterials at a B rating, so between a 60 and a 70, collectors at a C, and local roadways at a C minus. So the reason for this information is that we could run models against this to determine how much funding is needed to achieve this desired level of service, and does it control backlog. What you're seeing here in this graph is the results of that analysis. So we took these level of service goals that were defined, and we ran models against it. So on the X-axis there, you have annual budget each year over a 10-year horizon, and on the Y-axis, you have the post-rehab PCI score, so the PCI score after that 10-year horizon. And what this tells And what this tells us is if we look at each letter grade and where each of these classifications fall between A, B, and C letter grades, if we attempt to achieve, uh, that level of service that we previously defined, we would need on the order of, of, of about two point eight million dollars annually to meet all three letter grades across all three functional class, classifications. However, there's where the big buck comes into play. It does not control backlog. Two point eight million annually is not enough to control the growth in backlog and prevent the slide in those marginal roads from deteriorating. So while we could theoretically achieve, uh, those average PCI scores by each functional class, we can't control backlog. Okay? And I want to show you what that looks like here in terms of backlog because we ran a model specifically for it.
So again, so those, that two point eight million is for the Cs, the C minus and the B?
Correct.
But not, but not addressing the backlog?
Correct.
Okay.
You got it. Exactly. So it just, it just tackles the average PCI. And as we talked about earlier, that, that can be a distorted view when you're attempting to control growth and backlog as well. So what you're seeing here is what happens to backlog. So you've got annual budget each year over ten years on the X-axis, uh, uh, again here. And on the Y-axis, you have the post-rehab backlog outcome, meaning what happens to backlog at different funding levels. And we've plotted several different funding scenarios here to show you how backlog grows on us within the system. If we look at the green, the solid green line is the town's existing budget at two point five million dollars annually. That was also updated since the last presentation in September. At that budget, we can expect that the average PCI to drop to a fifty-eight, but more importantly, backlog is going to skyrocket to twenty-eight percent. So from the six point eight you're at, it will climb to twenty-eight percent of the network in a ten-year horizon. So we know that two point five million is not enough to arrest the growth in backlog.
I'm sorry, that, that's in ten years or?
That's in ten years, correct. Yeah, yep. This is a ten-year model. If we look at that dotted purple line, that, that dotted purple line is our recommended budget. The reason it's the recommended budget is because that budget level of five point five million dollars annually keeps backlog below that twelve percent mark that I talked about earlier, keeps you below that manageable level in terms of backlog. So at five point five million, we could keep backlog below twelve percent. And the net benefit of the additional funding is that your network average PCI score jumps to an average of a seventy as a result.
I'm sorry, I'm going to keep bugging you, but the, so the five point five keeps the backlog, does that include the two point eight? So that's the total amount?
Five point five million is the total budget needed, uh, to arrest, to, to slow the growth in backlog and keep it below that twelve percent mark over the next ten years.
Okay, thanks.
Yep. Now, the last one that I'll point out too, folks always want to know what, what level of funding would be required if we wanted to maintain existing backlog levels. So that dotted red line is that model. If you wanted to maintain a backlog at six point eight percent, it would cost on the order of seven point five million dollars annually to do so. And again, the thing to remember is the reason it's so expensive is because of the sheer number of roads that fall in that marginal category. They are at the, they are at the steepest part of their pavement deterioration curve and they're deteriorating very rapidly. And they're extremely costly as well. So when we talk about funding, and we've kind of already reviewed some of this, this is another graph that instead of showing backlog, we show PCI. So again, we have annual budget over ten years on the X-axis and the outcome of PCI on the Y-axis. The blue line is simply the trend line and the result of all the different models that we ran within the town's pavement management system to establish the trend. And again, the colored lines are the different models we wanted to share with you folks tonight. The steady state budget, uh, the, the amount of dollars needed to maintain your average score of a sixty-three as it is now, so maintain the status quo in terms of average PCI, that number would be on the order of three point six million. But what we found is three point six million, as we already know, isn't enough to arrest the growth in backlog. Your backlog still climbs over twenty-one percent, uh, in that scenario as a result of that. So in terms of funding gap, let's, let's talk about this in terms of where we are now versus what's being plotted and modeled, uh, on the graphs. The town budget versus the recommended budget shows a three mil, shows a three million dollar annual gap, meaning that's the delta, that's the difference between, uh, the recommended budget and your town budget. So you would need an additional three million dollars annually or thirty million over a ten-year horizon, uh, to achieve the recommended budget to keep backlog below twelve percent. So these are all in addition to numbers. Uh, the gap between the town budget and the steady state backlog, meaning to maintain that six point eight percent, is exponentially more. That gap is five million in addition to your existing budget. Five million annually with a ten-year cost of fifty million in the long run.
Um, Zach?
Yep.
So year eleven, is it that same number or would it drop, you think, or, I know you didn't do a?
That's a great question.
Projection, but?
So it, it, it really depends. This is a ten-year model and this is really about establishing where do we want to be and what funding sources do we have available? So after we determine, uh, where we want to be, we can run a ten-year plan, identify which roads need to be selected in what years and what rehabs need to be applied at that funding level. And after we achieve a desired, uh, uh, a desired letter grade or average PCI, we can run another lifecycle cost after that that says, what's it cost to maintain our ground here? Because it's going to be exponentially cheaper to maintain a roads in good condition than it is to start where you are now and tackle all this big-ticket expensive work. So we can do that, it just depends on what model we end up selecting as a result of that.
Grady?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. To the councilmember's point, um, we were discussing this with Zach about maybe like over twenty years, it might smooth things out a little bit, almost like an actuarial study here, like with, uh, you know, the public safety retirement system, you know, you re, kind of readjust, you recalibrate after twenty years. But the point is, you really need to do, you really need to hit this, um, in ten years and then maybe your maintenance costs have to be more than the two and a half million that we're spending today, but then maybe we can maintain this. So that's something, we didn't have enough time to have that kind of figured out in time for today because this discussion just happened. But I think we have like minds here on the same issue because we think that, you know, these are scary numbers here.
Right.
Um, and obviously, um, we'll get into, you know, how do we, uh, reach the, those numbers or get close to those numbers? But I think somehow, maybe looking at this from a twenty-year, you know, we need to do a ten-year plan, but I think having it looked at from a twenty-year perspective will help us kind of figure out what happens after the ten years and what do we need to put into maintenance in the next ten years after the first ten-year plan.
Right. Correct. And that can be done. And it's all dependent on, on where we end up in terms of desired PCI after that ten-year horizon.
Would the five point five, um, take care of the actual roads that were, are gonna need to be replaced or would that be like separate capital things that we'd have to do?
So the five point five million slows the growth in backlog. So to be clear, you're still going to have backlog.
Okay.
You're still going to have roads that need full reconstruction or, or full surface remove, uh, full surface removals on them. But what we're doing is, is we're slowing the growth and we're keeping it below that twelve percent mark to, to ensure that we have a manageable and sustainable network that we can manage moving forward. So?
Well, what makes it manageable and sustainable, so does it, is it, does that mean under the five point eight or we would still have to do some capital things to, you know?
Right. You would still have to do some capital things.
Okay.
Yes, absolutely. And in terms of what makes it manageable, when I say manageable, I'm really talking about from a financial perspective. Less than twelve percent is manageable and can be dealt with. Fifteen percent, we start flirting with, uh, the unknown as the backlog starts to grow. Twenty percent, it starts piling up faster than we can fund the pavement management program. And it can grow at a very alarming rate at that point too.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
And with that, uh, we've got a few more slides. Uh, I'll just wrap up with a few analysis findings. Uh, at a minimum, we'd certainly recommend maintaining a minimum PCI at or above a sixty-three with backlog below twelve percent for the entire roadway network. Uh, the town's current existing budget at two point five million dollars annually will, will result in a network PCI of a fifty-eight and backlog of twenty-eight percent, uh, over the next ten years. We would certainly suggest the full, the use of a full suite of rehab strategies that are reviewed on an annual basis as a part of the pavement management program updates. These models are directly impacted by the costs associated with the work that's to be done. So when there are fluctuations in materials, labor, and equipment, the models need to be updated to reflect that. Sometimes it can benefit us, sometimes it can hurt us and our monies don't go as far as we desired if costs increased on us. So we need to make sure the pavement management program stays current. Uh, steady effective rehab and maintenance over the long run is going to save the town far more, far more money over deferred maintenance. And then lastly, the town should resurvey their streets every few years to update the condition data, the rehab program, and the pavement deterioration curves. With each data collection cycle, the intent of the analysis is to update the performance curves as we have a new plot point that we can use in the system. Justin, did you want to take next steps or I can roll?
Go ahead.
Uh, so in terms of next steps, uh, the next step is certainly to obtain council direction tonight and return in the near future with a ten-year pavement management program that includes service levels and recommended sources of funding to meet these service levels. And then lastly, one of the other, uh, next steps is that council adopts a ten-year pavement management program with other sources of revenue to fund that program. With that, I'd be happy to answer any of your questions.
Thank you, thank you.
I have a question.
Vice Mayor.
So I don't know if you can see the suggested motion, but if the suggested motion goes forward, is that the five point five million from the two point five million or the seven point five million?
That is a great question. I cannot see the suggested motion.
Okay.
It, it does not include that, but we would give you that option when we come back for the pavement management program. You would basically, you can go one or the other. I would tonight, I think it'd be best for us to get consensus. In fact, by the way, this says a suggested motion and really it, we have to get consensus from you. Unfortunately, it wasn't agendocized as a special meeting, it's just a work session. But, um...
Okay, so not suggested motion, but consensus?
Yes.
If that is the direction we went, we would then, you'd come back before us and we still have to decide on the money aspect of it.
Right. And basically, what we think the option there would probably be bonding. We would recommend, um, some level of bonding over this. Um, I also think if we can go back to the slide that shows, um, the two different, whether you focus on the, um, backlog or you focus on the additional, it was like additional three million, that one there, it shows an additional three million or the additional five million. Um, Zach, do you want to kind of talk about the pros and cons of either the steady budget versus the three million in addition to what we're spending now? So, because I, I do think the first option probably is the one I would probably focus on. It's, it's more affordable and I think you get a lot of bang for the buck on that.
Right, absolutely. Uh, the second option was merely to illustrate the difference, the delta between, uh, the monies you have now and the monies required to maintain your backlog as it is now. But quite frankly, to maintain your backlog as it is now is unaffordable. It's a big number, uh, uh, that results in that. And I absolutely agree with Grady that the best value, the best bang for your buck in, in, in terms of the models is, uh, the town budget versus the recommended budget. Because remember, that recommended budget keeps backlog below that twelve percent mark. And the gap, the funding gap between what you have and what you need is an additional three million dollars annually with that thirty million over ten years. That keeps it below the twelve percent mark, it's manageable, keeps you in a good place to maintain the network, uh, uh, in good fashion, and that would be our recommendation.
But that thirty million, that's not all going to be reconstruction. That's a lot of different kinds of maintenance. So if we're going to propose a bond issue, that's not going to be for thirty million, it's going to be for reconstruction, correct?
Well, a lot of it has to do with timing. And when you, you do go to voters and you're right though, it's reconstruction, mill and overlay, um, so, and then trying to find additional money that we could put into maintenance each year as well.
And if I may, and, and, and the mayor had an excellent question in regards to capital projects. I've had this discussion with Mr. Miller. We have a couple of key roads here that are extremely wide and based on a population that is not likely going to happen in the seventy thousand range. One of those is King's Tree. We are oftentimes, as a group and individuals, dealing with traffic calming issues. And certainly, King's Tree is no stranger. We have a very wide, very long road there that, in my opinion, and, and it's shared by others, we should consider that one and Palomino, reducing the overall width of that road as part of a bond initiative by narrowing the street, adding some landscape improvements, some sidewalks. This helps us accomplish two things. One, traffic calming. Narrowing a road is one of the best methods of traffic calming we have. Two, it provides and adds to the walkable community that is also on our horizon and we are being asked to include. And in the long run, even though it's costly upfront, it reduces the cost for future maintenance by taking that from sixty feet to much narrower. Another good example of that is Palomino. These are minor slash major collectors depending on where you enter onto that road at. But in regards to capital projects, we need to keep these larger things in the back of our mind as well. It will be a benefit in the future if there's a way we can figure out to accomplish the majority of the goals that we set out here.
Thank you.
Justin, would you, um, consider that for El Lago too, or is that not wide enough for the residential areas?
Councilmember, we would consider El Lago west of Fountain Hills Boulevard because east of that, we have a raised center median, which is an, also an excellent form of traffic calming in there. But west of that, yes, we could, um, when you get into numerous residential homes, it's very, very difficult to do a raised median because of all of the necessary turning movements, primarily left. And so raised medians for that wouldn't work, but most certainly narrowing it and adding sidewalks would be a benefit.
Definitely. Councilman?
Yeah, thank you. Just, uh, wasn't Glenbrook, uh, also slated to have sidewalks and didn't we vote on that a few years ago, maybe the funding wasn't there to do it, but I, I know we discussed it.
Well, councilmember, what we had done in the past, and I can only go back a few years on that one, is we did apply for a grant to include that in our urban trails. As part of that proposal, the town engineer, Mr. Harrell, sitting right behind me here, he and I would have proposed, had we got the grant money, to actually narrow Glenbrook in the area where that urban trail would have happened. And yes, that's another excellent example. Glenbrook, um, as you know, um, and also El Pueblo, those are also very, very wide major collectors. Um, but we recently have invested a considerable amount of money there, um, replacing that pavement with the majority of a full-depth mill. So I didn't include those tonight simply because currently we are in excellent condition on those for at least the foreseeable future out to the eight or ten-year mark, depending on the type of weather we experience over that timeframe.
But to the councilmember's point though, um, we do believe probably with the safe routes of schools at Glenbrook, probably that will be one of the recommendations that that come out of it, which is to put in sidewalks to making it, you know, a safer walking path and all that. And we, we have submitted a, um, a grant request to, um, Mayor Cop Association governments for that. So you're absolutely right, that's one that we would consider.
And it's much less expensive to narrow a place like Glenbrook because we won't have to cut into all of those slopes. We already have the area available. So again, we achieve a couple of tasks. One, traffic calming. Two, making a safe, walkable environment in that area with those changes.
Councilman?
Any idea how long it'd take to amortize the cost of bringing these, these streets into a smaller, narrower path, uh, opposed to just maintaining what we have?
I do not have that information with me tonight, but we can certainly sit down and look at it.
How much does it cost to build a, a mile of, of two-lane roads with curb gutter and walk?
That one is a little bit difficult because the numbers are really, really up and down right now. So, and, and I don't want to give you a bad number. I will certainly research it based on most recent activities in similar conditions and get that to you as quickly as possible.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilman?
Would you run into, uh, utility issues on some of those streets like you did Fountain Hills Boulevard or, I know they're older streets.
That's an excellent question, councilmember. So since we won't not, will not be adding for the majority any drainage channels or ditches, but rather narrowing it and adding those improvements on the interior, we're not likely to encounter the same, um, issues. And also as part of that, because it's a long planning process, we would reach out to each one of them individually and allow them an opportunity to bring their facilities up to standard as well, which is very common. Um, and Saguaro was a good example of that, where there were numerous utilities that took that opportunity to upgrade their facilities. So the, the short answer to the question is, we're not likely to encounter the same type of issues that we did on Fountain Hills Boulevard because the excavation to make these improvements would be very limited.
Won't be as deep and extensive?
Correct.
And so SRP can't blame the road districts, if you don't think?
The road district.
No comment, sir.
Grady?
I was just going to say, so if we can get consensus on at least the, um, the, the rating condition, um, I think we... condition, I think we can move forward after tonight. I do think there's going to be additional work that we need to do and come up with capital costs associated with, with some of the streets that we mentioned tonight, narrowing them down. I, I do think, although I don't want this to be a distraction, I do want to see at some point, like a 20-year period of time to see what kind of impacts, once the 10-year plan is done, what that will have. But I also think that a lot of time between now and 10 years, there are going to be a lot of variable costs such as labor and, and material and such, that I think 10 years is probably realistic. And I think we can go ahead and do something like that, but again, it's, it's, it's as good as any kind of estimate would be for 20 years. So I still would like to do that, but I think that for our purposes, and if the council wants to try to look at, trying to help fund this somehow, I think that we'll do that, but I don't want this to be a distraction from what we're ultimately trying to achieve here, which is to put together a 10-year plan, work towards that. If we need to revise that plan based on capital investment that we're putting into narrowing streets, we can always have a, a real quick, you know, turnaround on the analysis and have them come back and, and share with you what that impact would be. And then also, same thing with the 20 years. Does that make sense?
Councilman Spelch?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, Zach, the, the C grade, I mean, I'm okay with that, I got a diploma to prove it. So that's not my problem. But is C, and based on like the surrounding communities and everything, is a C grade or a rating, is that okay? Is that what the average is? Or are we setting our sights too low at a C?
So in terms of an average condition of C, so your average condition of C that we've established is between about a 50 and a 60. Below 60 is a little low, based on averages, if you compare yourself to other agencies across the valley, even across the country. The thing to remember is, as your network average drops below a 60, it means you tend to have to rely on heavier and more costlier rehabilitation work in your network. So meaning it costs you, it costs you more in terms of dollar per mile to maintain your network due to the average condition it's in. So right now, the average we see is between about a 60 and a 65. Now, when you look at folks like Paradise Valley down the road, their network is phenomenal, they're in the upper 70s, which isn't realistic for most agencies and most folks. 70 seems to be the target that most agencies are comfortable with from a level of service perspective and an affordability perspective as well.
Councilman?
Just a couple of general comments. I, I mean, I think what scares me the most is just the ongoing additional costs needed on an annual basis to, to do this stuff. I mean, a bond issue is one thing, and, you know, overall, between the school district and, and, and us, I mean, citizens have been pretty receptive to, to bonding and specific projects, that kind of thing. They know what they're getting, but I, I'm more scared about just the additional ongoing funding that we need, not from bonding. So to me, that's a huge issue. And then I understand the local streets, and I talked about this a little bit in September, I guess. I mean, the C minus, given what we're looking at here in numbers, I, I get it, but it's just, to me, I would, you know, local streets, you know, that's where kids are playing and bikes are being ridden and skateboards and stuff. It's just, to me, it's unfortunate, and we've come to this, that it couldn't be better, but I totally understand why.
If I may, and one last comment, keep in mind that the level of service that we're asking you for tonight and the funding, that a percentage of that will be necessary to use to make additional infrastructure changes for each of the segments selected throughout the next several years. And what I mean by that is we may need to make changes to curb-opening ramps. Some people refer to them as handicap ramps. We may need to fix a considerable amount of curb. We may need to make some minor drainage modifications. So while this money is an incredible amount of money, note that that money is not only just taking care of this infrastructure, but it will also be addressing our other infrastructure needs directly tied to our roads, which are curbs, sidewalks, and minor drainage improvements.
If I may, Justin, although the council always has the, and we've done this in the past, always has the option to include that in the capital program and have general fund sourcing of revenue for that. So we've done that in the past as well. So just one, let you know, he is absolutely correct. Right now, like when we get these requests that come through that weren't programmed or planned, and we find that we do have an issue, or it's a repair, emergency repair, it comes out of the same bucket that does the annual pavement management, maintenance, and reconstruction. So, but if we, kind of like what we did with the sidewalks, we supersize what we spent on sidewalks, we can do the same thing in the capital program for some of these others. So we have really, the pavement management money, the two and a half million at least, is going for pavement management and not being, you know, spent on other things.
Anything else? These, um, these grades, I don't know, to me, that's, they're, they, it just doesn't mean that much, except in looking at what our responsibility is to prevent the backlog where we're at a point, and when does that happen, that we can't afford to keep up. So the, the, the grades, you know, I don't even know what those mean, except for in a triage, sort of a feeling of what is our responsibility here for 200 whatever-plus million dollars worth of roads? Is it seven years? Is it four years? When? If we continue with two and a half million dollars a year, when are we like, okay, we can't even fix it anymore? So when we come back and talk about money, I really like to figure out what's the critical point, and, and what's the amount, and when is it? Because that's the, the part where we're not fooling around anymore. So whether we can get it from folks not voting, or whether we end up having to just take it out of this budget, what is that drop dead, our responsibility? What do we have to do and when? And the other, the rest of it is what I, I agree with you. You know, it's like we have these million-dollar homes with roads in front of them that don't look very good at all. But is that even worth talking about now until we get to the point of knowing that we, that we can afford to protect this asset? And unfortunately, that's where we're at, you know, not pointing fingers, when it happened, how it happened, this is where we're at, and what are we going to do about it? And that's kind of the information I'm hoping to get back on, on what our next steps are.
Zach, can you just kind of summarize for the council what the pavement management program or plan will actually consist of? Because it's, it's going to be, I don't think we've had anything like this, and if you can kind of explain, once we take this information tonight, you go back and you'll run the, the modeling, you'll be able to figure out the streets. You want to kind of explain what they'll see when we come back?
Yeah, exactly. So what we'll do, what you're looking at here is the budget model. So it's, it's the outcome of spending money and what do we get for it in terms of level of service, condition, and backlog. When we talk about developing the pavement management program, it means harnessing the budget model or the level of service we want to chase. Meaning if that level of service is to keep backlog below 12 percent, that means we need to develop a pavement management program around that 5.5 million dollars, or whatever that number ends up being. So the pavement management program is an annual plan over the 10-year horizon that, that showcases or illustrates which roads are selected in what year, and what rehab is to be applied at what cost. So it's a fully prioritized list of what is to be done within the pavement management program. Now, it is prioritized using textbook pavement management. We prioritize by func, by functional class, arterial, collector, local roads. We prioritize by pavement strength, using the types of distresses present on the road to tell us which roads are deteriorating at a more rapid rate. But we also optimize this plan, meaning we look at the 10-year pavement management plan from a cost-of-deferral perspective. That really means cost-benefit. So we literally look, what's the cost of deferring this road and letting it slip and degrade into the next rehab category? If the cost is too great, then it behooves us to capture it now because we save exponentially moving forward. So it's a process of, of prioritizing using sound pavement management, sound engineering, as well as optimizing using sound financial cost-benefit techniques as well. And that is, that's exactly what your pavement management system does. That's how it operates within the program. So you'll see a map that'll show the roads to be selected over the next 10 years and the projects that the program has selected to optimize that model.
And if we have a vote on something, we have to have a plan if it fails because we can't leave it to chance that it's going to, you know, we, we might have to come up with it ourselves.
Right. So generally, what we do, when we produce the pavement management program and produce the final report, we won't just produce one 10-year plan at the 5.5 million. We generally do about three. So we'll produce the 5.5 million, that's the target, that's the optimal level of service. We'll also run another one at the two and a half million and maybe a number somewhere in between. But at any time, the pavement management program can be updated with a new model number and a new 10-year plan produced. That's, that's, that's the beauty of the system.
Anything else? Appreciate it. Thank you very much. And anybody have anything for the good of the order? Can I, uh, do I need a motion to adjourn? Do I? No? Okay, we're adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.